Okay, next discussion of design standards for electrical, electric, I keep wanting to say electrical. Electric vehicle charging stations.
Yes, good morning. Lisa Hannan, zoning official. This came about due to the plethora of electric vehicles we're seeing in the city. Like Teslas and we have the nickel ride. Staff's not recommending to mandate this, but to get some design guidelines in place if developers want to include them in their, in their plans when they develop. We just want direction whether we should move forward with some design guidelines. It would be up to the individual developer to put in the four-hour limitation signs or anything. We're not mandating that these are required by any of the developers.
Has anybody asked yet?
Not yet.
That's where this came from, from some emails that I got.
I've actually had a request by a resident that we should consider.
The city putting them in or private people?
Just having them available. Excuse me. They weren't specific. They just said with the increased number of, of electric vehicles that we feel that there should be the opportunity to recharge somewhere. It was not whether it was in a public parking lot or... I guess the question I have is, I don't really know how much, what does it take to recharge an electric vehicle and what kind of... I know we, we do not, our plugs, our electrical outlets in our parks are available. We do not charge people for recharging their cellphone or whatever. So we're, and I've had people actually ask me, why do we do that? And it's just something that we do. So I didn't know whether this was something in...
I'd like to address this. We had, we had discussed this briefly. We brought it up earlier, over a year or so ago, regarding that we could get two free Tesla stations, et cetera. The issue was, you raised your eyebrows because you weren't here yet then, huh?
No.
Okay. But the issue was, is that the Tesla station wasn't adaptable to the others. And, and, and they would be weak as the city could put them in market spaces and so forth. If I understand this right, we're basically, we're saying if, if the Wyvern wants to put in a charging station, we're just looking to put standards for other people that want to put those standards in. And I think that's worth us pursuing because it's not only just Tesla. Nissan already has out Volkswagen is coming out in a big way with electric vehicles. General Motors and Ford in particular are coming out with a large number of electric vehicles, et cetera. And if a business owner wants to provide that service slash for their customers, we should have a standard so that we don't have this hodgepodge of, you know, just like we would have, when we have a code for a, a screen for a swimming pool. Okay? We should be treating it with the same type of seriousness and ambiance. So if the, the question before us is, they ask urban design to come up with a formula for us that for our, our, our community so that we don't have this hodgepodge and, and that we have some continuity and signage or whatever the, those issues are, I think that that's the simple issue that we should just go forward with.
Yeah, that's fine. And I'm sure that this takes, you can't just turn a regular outlet into one of these charging stations.
Oh, I know that. No, I, I realize that. I was just wondering as far as really more paying for the power that you are, you know, if you go to a filling station, you have to put in money to even get air out of a pump. So it's, if you, that was where my, you know, just wondering.
Well, unless we're putting one for public that we pay for, I don't think that's an issue.
I agree with all of what Gary said. I did a little bit of research on this when I got the emails several months ago. Howard and I communicated and then Lisa and I communicated. I, I like the idea of doing guidelines, suggested guidelines rather than a heavy-handed ordinance. Because as an example, Craig from the Sheraton Four Points has expressed that they might be interested in putting a couple of stations in for their customers, which would be a great thing because that's a superior location for anybody that's in the downtown community. So I, I like this because right now we have nothing in the city limits. The closest that I found was at Harbor Nissan. That's the closest charging station. And as Gary said, Tesla is not compatible with all the other electric cars' charging stations. So that will be something that, that maybe these property owners can take into consideration when they put their stations in. This was taken from West Palm Beach, I believe, right?
There are a couple in there. One was from Miami. One was from Boca Raton.
Okay. So, you know, they, they have a lot bigger demand than we do. But at the same time, I'd like to see us be proactive and do something where we can offer this to the, to the local community. And if the businesses want to adopt it, then so be it. I think this is a great way to start.
While we put together some thoughts for your consideration, on the video screen you see a sign that says four-hour electric vehicle charging only. Is it your thought that, that limitation, including the use of a space by someone that wasn't charging their vehicle, would be enforceable as a city ordinance, like a parking ordinance?
I think that's...
Okay, well...
I think that's up to the property owner who puts the stations in. They can make the rules about it, but...
Well, if, if, if it's going to be enforced, you know, just like a disabled parking spot.
Yeah.
You know, we, we need an ordinance to be able to enforce that. So there's two things that would be of consideration. One is the duration and one is the unauthorized use by someone that's not charging their vehicle.
The only problem with that is that some vehicles take longer than others to charge. And Tesla has a quick charge plug-in that you, that some of the vehicles come with when you buy them. Some of them do not. Some of them are more of a long-term charge. So I don't know how you mandate that.
So if this is going to be something that's market-driven and in by, put in by the property owner, my suggestion would be that the enforcement not be a city issue.
Okay.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I'd agree with that.
That's where I was going. That's where we were on, we, we just didn't say this eloquently.
I just wanted to make sure.
I think I was getting consensus we were on board with that.
We're not going to include anything like that.
It certainly makes sense that you, if, as in some areas of our city, parking spaces are at a premium. And to have someone go in to recharge and then stay there was unfair to others. But I agree with the rest of the council members that it's really more of a business owners.
Yes.
And we addressed that issue when we discussed this before. We realized there was really no way if we put a charging station in the parking lot, we, we had no way of really enforcing that they did, they were there more or less than four hours in a reasonable way.
Well, if they didn't, we, conceivably we could if it was a non-electrical, a non-electric vehicle in that space. But by the direction of the city council, we have eliminated a lot of headaches that otherwise would come about.
We can't, we can't enforce something on private property, can we?
Sure we can. That's how we, that's how we do the handicap.
A lot of places also don't have hours, like, like Sarasota, Marina Jacks, there's no hour limit. It's just electric charging vehicles. But I agree, let's just leave this alone.
Because if they're spending the night in a hotel, they're gonna have to come down after four hours and go move their car. I mean, I don't...
Yeah.
Yeah, let their, let the...
Not my problem, man.
So we'll just come up with some guidelines.
Next, we have discussion of CARF accreditation of residential treatment programs.
All right. Now, I'll speak to this. I've, I've, I've actually been on the board of residential treatment centers and actually been through this accreditation process. This is pretty much the gold standard in the U.S., Canada, but also the world in general for making sure that residential treatment centers are the standard you want them at. And this is something I'm thinking so that we actually have providers in the city that actually provide the quality of care that our residents deserve. I think this is just a quality measure as well as a safeguard to make sure that we don't get for providers who are not going to provide safe, good conditions. And so this is a way which we kind of stay out of the way of a lot of other laws. But we simply, it's just, just, just saying in the city of Punta Gorda that we would have those who provide residential treatment centers, that they would be CARF accredited. And this is referring to, 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 this is dealing with like opioids and other, substance abuse disorder type situations.
Is this for new facilities or for all facilities?
I'd say it would be for new. It would be for any new business establishing here.
Yes.
So the question would be is, for example, here a few months ago, we had an individual that wanted to put in an opiate treatment center. This would be a standard that they would have to adhere to.
Yes.
That regardless of who they were, that we could use as a standard so that we would have some control over who came in and who didn't.
Yeah, just to make sure that our residents got the care they deserve. Because there is, there's been a, a practice in Florida, pretty much like a drug treatment tourism, to bring people here and have very low quality sober homes, conditions in. And that's just not good for the patient nor is it good for the city resides. And this is a way in which we can ensure that if someone wants to provide treatment program, we'll, you know, because we have to allow them to do this. I mean, we, we have a host of laws that will require us to allow someone to open a facility. This is the way that we make sure our residents get the protection they need in terms of the best quality programs.
I'm okay with it.
I am too.
So we would need to amend our, our land development regulations to make this a requirement for this type of a facility. We'll prepare an ordinance and for your consideration.
Works for me.
Thank you for bringing it up to us.
Recommendation from city officers, Howard.
We have two items. Second meeting in October. Chenep will be here, Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program. And they will put together some information on an update on the environment and the red tide issue and just what they're doing or what they see out there. The second item is the library letter. It was drafted. We can certainly change it to however you would like it to be changed. The council discussion was a community center, a cultural heritage center, a Charlotte County history museum, or some combination thereof.
I would like for it to just reflect what we, what we said here at the council meeting. The only item, issue I had with the letter was the second sentence of the second paragraph, which then made it sound as if we had a preference and we, we didn't. So I thought otherwise I was fine with the letter. And appreciate whose ever time went into it. I just, you know, wanted to accurately reflect our conversation.
You can change her.
I agree.
And I asked Howard to bring Chenep. We've had a lot of interaction with people concerned about the algae and the red tide. And really the Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program, they're, they're created to try to protect the, our estuary in particular. And she's got quite a regional reach. And just to educate the citizens on what's going on and how they can be more involved and the resources, they, they, they're not really a political organization. They're not supposed to take sides. They're really an educational and inform, information source. So I really wanted Jennifer to come here. We had a couple of meetings with citizens and come here and share what she shared with the, with the citizens.
That's great. Yeah, her district goes all the way from Sarasota down into Lee County and up the Calhouchie River and is going to go, at least that's the proposal now, to, to enhance data collection all the way up to Lake Okeechobee because it turns out beyond where they stopped, the data collection became quite spotty about the situation. And also they're getting involved in, or trying to get involved because funding is, is an issue, trying to get involved in some new technologies that would be beneficial for both green, green algae issues as well as red tide issues. So it's a great organization and it's been great. I've enjoyed working with Jennifer these past years.
Okay. By the way, the letter, the library letter has all our letters to the county. Protocol is they go to the county commission chair, whoever it is, and that gets filtered down to the rest of the commissioners. That's, that's the protocol.
Can the revised letter be sent to council before it goes out so we can take a final look at it before it's...
Whatever your wishes.
I think maybe we should at this point.
City attorney.
Just a word about the pending vivante litigation. As of at least Friday, we still have not heard from the judge regarding the decision on the two, on the, on the several pending motions to dismiss. There are two separate lawsuits. One is addressing the city's granting of the special exception and special permit being challenged as being inconsistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The other one was among other features of the challenge, it was contesting who actually owns the land that the special exception and special permit applies to. And also whether or not that ownership included the ability to put those docs in. And we, that is clearly an issue for the court to determine. And there's been no decision on the motions dismissed. If the judge denies the motions to dismiss on that lawsuit, then there will be a trial with a determination as to who actually owns the property of concern. I'm just letting you know that's where we are and what, what's involved in the litigation.
Thank you. City clerk.
Yes, just a couple of things under boards and committees, vacancies. We have a three-year term for an alternate on the code enforcement board. Under nominations, we have a three-year term for an alternate on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We do have one eligible applicant. If you'd like to nominate and appoint, you may do so. That's Mr. Bothwell.
Nominate and appoint Mr. Bothwell.
Do we have a second?
Second, sorry.
We have a motion to second to nominate and appoint Mr. Bothwell. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you. And then lastly, we do have an appointment, appointments, your voting forms. This will be, we have three three-year terms. This is the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have five eligible applicants. You're voting for three, please.
So if we just, what did we do with Mr. Bothwell?
We just put him in as an alternate for this committee.
You go ahead and include him in your consideration because alternates can serve as a regular member. So if, if he should be chosen, then his seat would become vacant and we would announce that vacancy.
Okay, and so the appointees are Mr. Holgland, Mr. Weiner, and Mr. Woolley.
All right, thank you. Thanks.
Policy and legislation, I don't have anything, but Howard has something under council member comments. We'll start with that.
Oh, I just have one quick thing. Excuse me, I received a letter from a citizen asking about if the city was going to do anything to legislate the plastic straws issue. And so what I did was, I, I mentioned it when I went to the PGICA board meeting. And I asked the board for the PGICA if they would take on the lead to come up with a list of suggested guidelines to make us more of a green community. So what they did was they picked up the ball and ran with it. And it's awesome because they got together with Team Punta Gorda and Smart Growth and there's one other group that's, oh, the Downtown Merchants Association. And they're all working jointly together to include the business community and all the citizens who want to put input into it. And they're going to come up with a list of guidelines for how we can be a better community and be more environmentally friendly. So they're going to include things like restaurant to-go boxes and plastic straws. And there's already some restaurants that are doing some of this, by the way. But in order for it to be more palatable for business owners to adopt, we thought that maybe going after it as suggested guidelines rather than an ordinance that needed to be enforced, that, that it would be more, you know, acceptable to the business owners. So they're working on it and I've asked to not put it on an agenda till we have some feedback from them. And we have their list that they're going to move forward with. So I thank all of them for doing that because it's, I think it's really going to be much more effective. And I think all the business owners will be much more likely to adopt some of those policies readily. This will also include some recycling guidelines and other things along those lines. So I think it's going to be a really good thing for us and show that we're proactive.
I have a business owner in mind that would probably want to participate.
Okay.
Because he owns property down in Fort Myers Beach, so he's been through this whole...
That'd be great.
Situation. So I'll, I'll let you know.
So they're actually contacting restaurants and things like that. I mean, involving them in the creation of this as opposed to coming up with something that we want to...
I'm not following you.
They're actually involving some of the, some restaurants, for example, in the creation of this list and what the possibilities are so that it's, it's not just a citizen wish list, but it's more of a, a combined effort.
Yes, and Debbie Malinowski, who represents the Downtown Merchants Association, wanted to be involved. And I had put something on my city council Facebook page and she responded to it. And I said, I'll, I'll connect you with them. And so they've all been communicating with each other and they've had a couple of meetings already. So they're, they're moving forward with adopting some, a list of things. So I think it's going to be very effective.
So we'll vote, Ja.
Nothing really to say, but I wanted to ask David, if you, can you share with residents, I guess, when we can and, like, when we can and can abstain? Because I think there's misunderstandings, thinking that we have options that we don't have in terms of our voting choices.
Sure. State law actually requires you to vote unless you have a voting conflict as defined by the ethics statute. So if the vote would result in a special benefit or loss of a pecuniary monetary interest to you, then under the ethics statute, you are required to declare a conflict and, and not vote. In all other cases, you are required to vote.
And when you do abstain, you have to fill out a paperwork.
There's forms, yes.
I still feel that it's good practice just to let people know. You're, like, when we've discussed the Punta Gorda History Center and there was something we were discussing about them, I said, you know, I'm on the board of the Punta Gorda History Center. I don't get anything from it, but I just wanted to let people know. So I just felt it was being, you know, just...
There's, there's, there's two different types of conflicts of interest that the public perceives. One is the, more or less the moral conflict of interest and the other is the statutory conflict of interest. The state does not allow you to abstain based on a moral conflict of interest.
I understand that.
No, I'm just...
But I, I felt it's important to...
That's fine.
To let people know anyway. And I, I thank you for the clarification.
I think that's good for transparency's sake.
Yeah, I mean, we're obligated to vote. But it's letting people know.
Nancy, comments?
No, Ja, thank you for bringing up the CARF. Because the Charlotte behavioral is accredited by CARF. And I think that that's a standard that is important for us to consider in the future.
On that note, I actually have politicians and commissioners from Collier coming up to Charlotte County to look at our model because their mental health services aren't where they'd like it to be. And I think we have a very good, our county has a very good practice.
And I wish you, is it Yom Kippur?
Yom Kippur, yes.
Yes.
Yes. I, I want to wish everybody La Chantelva, a very sweet new year. The year is 5779. And may you all have a sweet year and we're going to have a very productive year, so.
Any other comments?
Oh, I want to say thanks for everybody that supported my craziness last Friday at Comedy for a Cause. We raised over, we raised almost $50,000. It was, it was a very good turnout. I did represent the city as the mayor of ICE and had a good time and it was productive. So I want to thank all of our businesses and citizens that turned out to help us support it. We filled, we filled the, filled the room.
Thank you. Citizens' comments, any topic. Make your way to the podium. You have three minutes.
My name is Mark Kenyon. I live in the Bird Section. And Lynn, I have a question. We're, a bunch of us in the Bird Section are really confused over this so-called $2.5 million. Because it's been pointed out that when the first budget numbers were put forward at 1.5 million, it included $400,000 for land purchase. Now, I don't know, does it or does it not, the, the $2 million budget include the land purchase that was voted on this morning?
The only thing that was voted on this morning was to purchase the land.
Yes, agreed.
So we will get with our consulting engineer to fine-tune his estimates, his estimates. You are correct, the $1.5 million included project management, land costs, you name it. That was done, who God, over three years ago.
So the question is, does the $2 million that's now on the table include the land?
Yeah, we will double check.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll double check.
I think that's where the confusion's coming in of suddenly it jumped to 2.5 million instead of 1.5 million.
We will double check.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's a fair question. We'll double check.
Thank you. Citizens' comments, any topic.
Wendy Young. I also live in the Bird Section of Punta Gorda. And Mr. Weiner, I was really pleased to hear you say that the Buckley's Cut will benefit the entire Punta Gorda Isles Canal community because I believe that's true. And that's why I want you to seriously consider that the assessment should be spread among all the benefiting property owners, including the entire canal district. I will continue to ask you to review that whole idea of having only the Bird Section be essentially assessed for this property. Thank you.
Karen Turnbull, PGI Bird Section. I'd like to thank Lynn for bringing forward our very serious concerns about, you know, 1 million, 2 million, infinity for all we know. And the reason this is such a huge contentious concern is because of this notion that this one small group of people has been targeted as the only ones benefiting and therefore the only ones shouldering the entire cost of this project. You, you said, and it's true, we need to bring this forward, make sure it keeps going because it benefits all of PGI and it is best for the city. That's true. And therefore all of PGI should pay for it. It makes perfect sense. In terms of property value rising by 25, 30,000, that is nothing but a convenient way of making people feel good about charging a specific group of people. No one has any idea what anybody's property value is going to be. It all depends on market situations, the time it's sold. Not only that, those of us who live there did not buy property there to flip it and try to make as much money as possible. We bought property there to retire, to build our dream homes and to live there until we die. So the only benefit we get from our theoretical property value theoretically going up is higher property taxes, which benefits us not at all. In addition, if someone is buying property, if I were going to PGI to buy a house and there was one house that didn't have to pay a huge assessment for a pass over there and a house over here in the Bird Section that did have to pay 1,000-plus, who knows whatever, for a pass, I would buy the house that didn't have this extra assessment tagged on to it. The special assessment business of targeting a certain area has really made this whole issue contentious for no reason. You know, I think it's really putting up a roadblock. It's, you know, if you're on this side of Bell Harbor, you're just as close, but you don't have to pay. If you're on this side, you do have to pay. I, I echo the concerns of my neighbors and really hope that you will look at this whole issue again in, in terms of just logic and common sense. I know people who don't live in the Bird Section who would be very happy to pay their fair share. I know people who don't live in the Bird Section who would be very happy to pay their fair share. In fact, I've talked to no one who would not want to pay their fair share. I know that every Realtor for every property in PGI is going to tell their buyers that PGI has two boat exits. It's not just going to be the Realtors selling bird properties. It's going to be Realtors selling properties in all of PGI.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Citizens comments, any topic? Seeing none, we are adjourned.